All right, calling this meeting of the Rhode Island City Council to order. If we could have roll call, please.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Here.
Councilmember George?
Here.
Councilmember Barnich?
Here.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Here.
And Mayor Ray Russel is absent.
And with that, we will go to public comment on the closed session items. Seeing no one in chambers, check online.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
Okay, and with that, we will move on to the announcement of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On this evening's closed session, there's one item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section 549, 56.91, potential case.
And with that, we will adjourn to closed session. All right, calling this meeting of the Rhode Island City Council to order. If we could have roll call, please.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Here.
Councilmember George?
Here.
Councilmember Barnich?
Here.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Here.
And Mayor Ray Russel is absent.
And with that, we will go to public comment on the closed session items. Seeing no one in chambers, check online.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
Okay, and with that, we will move on to the announcement of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On this evening's closed session, there's one item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section 549, 56.91, potential case.
And with that, we will adjourn to closed session.
I will call this regular meeting of the Roy Grandi Council to order and if we could have roll call please.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Here.
Councilmember George?
Here.
Councilmember Barnage?
Here.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Here.
And Mayor Ray Russum is absent.
Mr. Blair with, we'll be led in a flag salute by Mr. Blair with Central Coast Cops and Kids. If you step up here, sir, it'd be great.
And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to share anything about the Cops and Kids program? Sure, thanks.
Thank you very much for having me tonight, I appreciate it. I am Bruce Blair and I am president of California Central Coast Cops and Kids. We have 120 members with our organization and we've been very busy for 2024. And to start off with, I'm going to tell you about our field day that we're going to be having coming up in November 3rd. That's always the first Sunday of the year in November. And I've already passed out some flyers with all the people behind me. And it's going to be our 29th annual Field Day and it's going to be from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. We will have an emcee there and his name is Retro Bill. And he's a great guy, he's very enthusiastic and he also does a lot of our school assemblies. And I'll talk about him in a second. We're going to be at the Field Day, we'll have over 40 law enforcement agencies, which is kind of cool. It's going to be at the Porter Field in Arroy Grande. And they'll bring their Easy Up tents, they're going to have canines, we'll have the CHP helicopter. We're going to have demonstrations, we'll have cotton candy, we're going to have face painting, t-shirts. And everything is free for the families. And we usually have about 4,000 families come to this event. So please, if you could all make it, that'd be fantastic. About California Central Coast Cops and Kids. We are an organization in San Luis Obispo County, but we partner up with 27 different agencies around county of San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara. And when I see that we partner up on them, we honor them once a month. We honor either a dispatcher or an officer. And at these honorary programs, we barbecue, barbecue tri-tip, beans, bread. It's really an amazing feat that we do, this is every month. As a matter of fact, we were in Arroy Grande PD at the end of 2023 and we honored one of your officers at that honorary party, which was kind of nice. Also, we do the graduations out at Lompoc, at the Lompoc Police Academy. We usually have about 50 law enforcement agencies that graduate. You don't know this, but it's two times a year, in June and December. So it's kind of cool. And we're there with the graduation and we give out awards. And these are pretty cool awards, the Valedictorian Award and we give out scholarships. A thousand dollars for a valedictorian, 750 for our scholarships. And so we're very inundated with that. Retro Bill, Retro Bill is an amazing person. He goes to school assemblies and he'll do motivation assemblies for about an hour. And he helps the kids with self-esteem, confidence and has a program that is so amazing and just so, you're so into it when you're there. The kids just love him. As a matter of fact, I've talked to a few people in the audience that also have seen Retro Bill. Also, we're a nonprofit agency, you know, we have one golf tournament that is our main income for the whole year. So what I like to tell people is, hey, if you want to join Cops and Kids, we have 120 members. It's only $50 a year. And we do a lot of things every, every year. We've been so busy this year, I can't go through them all because they only have a few minutes here, but I wanted to tell you about it. And also, if you go to our website, which is ccck.org, it's a great website, brand new. And also, if you go to our website, which is ccck.org, it's a great website, brand new. If you want to become a member, you can just go ahead and sign up online. Or, we have a great little tab also, that's called donations. And so if anybody wants to donate for our law enforcement charity program, they'd be great too, because our mission, our mission is to bring your families, your kids, and support law enforcement, and what we do is bring them together, bring the community together. And besides us, the Sheriff's Defenders Committee, we're the only ones that do this in the whole county. So unless anybody has any questions, I think that's it for my presentation. Anybody? I got a lot of answers, come on. Okay, thank you. And remember, our website is California Central Coast Cops and Kids, which is ccck.org. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Blair. And we will then move on to closed session announcements, I'll turn that over.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So for the closed session item that was read into the record at 5:00 p.m. this evening, there is no reportable action.
And we'll move on, we do have an honorary presentation tonight for National Native American and Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month. And if Mona Tucker could step up to the...
My pleasure.
So this is a honorary proclamation recognizing November 24th is National Native American and Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month. Whereas the National Native American Heritage Month is also referred to as Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month, and is a time to recognize the history and experiences of the indigenous peoples of the United States, and to rejoice in the diverse, enriched cultures and great contribution of indigenous people and tribes. Whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 in recognition, was expanded to Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, designating the month of November as Native American Heritage Month. And whereas Native American and Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month allows us to spread awareness about indigenous people and tribes, and to educate people about the various challenges faced by indigenous peoples in the past and the present. Whereas indigenous peoples play a critical role in health and vitality of our great nation as leaders, advocates, business owners, artists, teachers, writers, courageous members of our armed forces, and so much more, their contribution to our society are cause for celebration and appreciation by all Americans. And whereas the city of Arroy Grande resolves to work side by side with indigenous peoples and tribes to secure stronger, safer communities and safeguard sacred heritage for future generations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, for Karen Ray Russum, mayor of the city of Arroy Grande, do hereby proclaim November 2024 is Native American and Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month, and urge all our citizens to observe this month with gratitude, sensitivity, and use of appropriate programs. So, thank you for being here, and I'll give you a few moments here to speak.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hachi misasaksi, hello my friends. My name is Mona Olivas Tucker, and I'm the tribal chair for Yak Tichu Ticha Yak Talhini Northern Shimash tribe. And translated, that means the people of the full moon, the Talhini people. The name Shimash came along in the late 1800s, and really isn't appropriate, but it is commonly used today. And when we refer to ourselves as the people of the full moon, we're not just talking about the moon, we're talking about the fullness of life. It's a privilege to be here tonight, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that the city of Arroy Grande and the people of Arroy Grande has given us this proclamation. Arroy Grande has a deep history, the Shimash people have been here for well over 10,000 years. And there are some people from Arroy Grande who, in the world of native people, are quite important. One of them is my great-grandmother Rosario Cooper, who lived in Lopez Canyon. And for people who study Shimash languages, she's well-known. She was considered a consultant to J.P. Harrington, who was a linguist, who in the late, in the early 1900s realized that native languages, native California languages, were being lost, because the people who spoke those languages as their first language were older, and they were dying, they were passing away. So J.P. Harrington came to San Luis Obispo to find a speaker, a fluent speaker of the language of this land, and couldn't find one. And he looked all over, and he talked to people, he had a little car, drove around in it. He didn't have a lot of money, even though he was sponsored by the Smithsonian. I don't know how he found my great-grandmother who lived in Lopez Canyon, because even getting there today wouldn't be easy. You can't get there today unless you have a boat, so, but back then, it would have been a hard job for him. But he found her, and over a period of several weeks, over two or three years, they worked together to save our language. So Rosario is important, and she's important to the city of Arroy Grande, I believe. And the work that she did is now housed at the Smithsonian. 10,000 pieces of paper, of which she wrote words, language, but much more than that, because she was able to impart to J.P. Harrington the history of our family, which includes a lot of the history of this place, in San Luis Obispo and other places. So it's much, it's not just a list of words, it's our family's history and our family's stories. So I'm very proud of her and the work that she did. And she had one child that survived infancy, my great-grandfather. And my father was the youngest of 12 children, and Rosario delivered all those children, because she was also a midwife. She passed away, we believe, six months after her last session with J.P. Harrington. And we know that she was older in age, and we know that she was not in good health, but she never quit. And without her, so much of what we know, we wouldn't know. Our language revitalization that our tribe is undergoing right now, we wouldn't have that ability. So I would like to say that on Rosario's behalf, and on my tribe's behalf, we accept this, and we thank you very much.
Thank you for that, and we'll move on now to the Five Cities Homeless Coalition Operations Update.
Technology, it's a wonderful thing. Good evening, Council, Janet Nichols with the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening, just to give you a brief update of some of our work and some of our services to the city of Arroy Grande and its citizens. First off, I would like to thank you for your long-term support. You have been vital to our organization since our very beginning, long before I arrived. And I, on behalf of the board, want to extend our appreciation to your continued support over many, many years. This is going to be a brief update of our last fiscal year, which ran July 1, 2022, or 2023 to June 30, 2024. So this is our most recent fiscal year, but I did want to add some information for you in context. Our mission is to, in fact, bring our community together, to strengthen our community by offering resources, support, and hope to those who are experiencing homelessness, as well as those who are facing homelessness, for which we are seeing a great increase in incidents of late. We do that through providing financial resources, as well as case management, and ultimately looking for housing opportunities for folks. Our focus is very much on providing housing, and we try to do all that we can to help people navigate that process, or retain their housing. So I'm going to give you just a couple of bits of information. We have been in business since 2009, we have been providing services since 2012. However, what you see before you this evening in this slide is to share with you a paradigm shift, if you will, that we're having within the organization in looking at the fact that there are really three key factors that are incumbent upon us to make sure that we are providing the guidance for stability for housing, and that being not only having safe, affordable housing, but also that our citizens have either the income or the benefits to maintain their homes through vouchers, such as hazardous vouchers, et cetera, and that they are able to maintain their healthcare, both physical and mental health. And we have found that those are three key factors that affect, really, the stability for folks moving forward and staying stable in their homes. We have done a couple of things of the last couple of years. You will note that we have historically not had shelter services, other than a warming center, and I'll talk about that here at the end. But we did open our cabins for change program in December of '22, and then most recently opened our Balaico and Barca interim shelter with bungalows for another 30 people, we opened that in July of this year. One of the things I'd like to draw your attention to is that the majority of folks that we are seeing are chronically homeless. They have been homeless for at least a year, and have at least one disabling condition. And efforts to date, 66% of those who have gone through that program have moved into stable housing. Of that, we can see that seven of our 76 participants were from the city of Arroy Grande, and we have 283 people on our waiting list, including 60 residents from Arroy Grande. Our main program has been for as long as we, one of our first programs that we initiated, and really honing in on our focus of housing, has been our rapid rehousing program. That is a program where we move people who are homeless back into housing by providing financial support for rent and deposit assistance, as well as case management services. Last year in total, we helped 200 households move into housing last year. Of those, 22 were from the city of Arroy Grande, and we spent approximately $85,000, $86,000 in move-in rent and deposits. One of the things that we were able to add through the COVID CARES Act money was to provide some landlord incentives that was very helpful in helping landlords look at some of the risks that our clients may have had by rental history and otherwise, and was very helpful in drawing their attention and helping build our landlord pool. We now have landlords coming back to us time and time again, saying, I have another unit coming up, do you have someone to move in? So the partnership that we have with our landlords and with our clients in providing that case management stability, not only helping them find housing, but then helping them retain their housing once they move in, is very critical. And so the financial assistance with the case management is really the critical component that needs to be there. One of the other programs we have, which has unfortunately grown exponentially in the last few years, has been eviction prevention, or homeless prevention. We, for the first time last year, also served 200 households with services. We spent more than a half million dollars in financial assistance for helping people throughout San Luis Obispo County retain their housing. In that, 33 households were from the city of Arroy Grande, we spent $134,000 helping people retain their homes. Average is about $4,000, and if you think about the cost of services once one loses housing, and what it takes to get them back, this is probably one of the most cost-effective programs that we can offer. Unfortunately, this year, we have received a $200,000 reduction in homeless prevention funding. And so I'm not expecting that we're going to necessarily have the same results this year as we have last year. And for anyone familiar, the cost of rent has gone up exponentially, especially since COVID. Some estimate as much as 54% here in the county. We begin our process really through outreach and immediate needs. We have an outreach team that's out every day throughout the South County area, from Avila to the riverbed. And then we have our access center at 100 South 4th Street in Grover Beach. We see a large number of folks coming in on a daily basis at our access center, as well as reaching out for services that we might encounter for folks that are living out of doors. And these are predominantly people who are living unsheltered. On any given night here in the county, we probably have 80% of those who are experiencing homelessness, living unsheltered. But we do have a number of successes. Last year, we were able to help folks move directly from the street, either into shelter, rapid rehousing, or be reunified for their families at a rate of about 19%, which is pretty phenomenal, in my opinion. And you can see the numbers that we serve for the folks from Arroy Grande, we're about 30 people of the 424 that we serve. And 21 of those 424 also noted that their last permanent residence was in Arroy Grande. So it's important, I think, that folks recognize that people are not from someplace else, but they are, in fact, our community members. Most of the folks that we serve are from this area, and the recent point in time count estimated that as much as 90% of folks were from this area. So it's not, it's not that we're seeing people from elsewhere. Unfortunately, we're having folks struggle here locally who have been here for a long time. And then on this graph, you can simply see the number of items that we have provided by quarter last year, predominantly around food, clothing, water, hygiene. Those are the most immediate need sorts of things, but we also provide assistance with vehicle repair, bus passes. If someone is looking for reunification with a family, we'll try to find transportation to get them. So there's a spectrum of services that we'll try to either provide ourselves or refer for another agency that may have better services. One of our programs that we began in 2017 is our unaccompanied youth program. That number on the lower left that says five should say 50. Little typo on my part, I apologize. This group of folks are a unique group, they are 16 to 24, and they are unaccompanied, meaning they are without parent or guardian, and they are out of the house for one reason or another. It may be that they became a family, it may be that they, their benefits as child support ran out, there are any number of reasons that we find that these youth are experiencing homelessness. The challenge is, they have no rental history, they have no credit history, and oftentimes they're lacking significant guidance, and not really knowing what the steps are. We work very closely with Family Care Network and other providers that work with folks who are in the foster care system. The youth that we work with specifically are not foster care youth. They are homeless for some other reason, and we are working really hard to move them into housing. We have master leased a couple of units for youth that we have youth living in now. We're hoping to transition those leases to those youth. And then we have a number of youth who have moved into the Pismo Terrace facility there at El Camino and 4th Street. And we are anxious to be working with the Kaye Wakine Project in San Luis Obispo, where another 30 units for homeless youth are going to be set aside. So we're working with People's Self-Help Housing, and we'll be providing case management services to those youth. Going back to the three stools, the three legs of the stool, if you will, in addition to housing, obviously, employment and education and healthcare is really important. And so we have a strong emphasis with our youth program, not only to help them find housing, but help them move forward in both their education and employment. I mentioned the warming center earlier, we have had a warming center here in San Luis Obispo, in South County, since 2014. This was the first and only shelter in South County until we opened our cabins for change program last year. The warming center itself has moved, I think, six times since we have opened it. And this is pictures of our newest location at 1023 East Grand, there across Mechanics Bank. We activate this shelter, it's an inclement weather shelter, so we activate it on a cold rainy nights, weather at 50% chance of rain or 38 degrees or less. We use the NOAA forecast system as our trigger. And for folks who would like to be added to any notifications of when we are activating, they can either email us at info@fivechc.org, or they can send us a text message, add me at 805-295-1501, and we will be happy to add them. So we... at 805-295-1501, and we will be happy to add them. So we, we were open, I think, 50, we were open 38 nights last year. The year prior, we were open 58 nights. Tells you the swing in terms of weather. You can tell me whether it's going to rain this year or not. The largest year that we, I think we had was one year we did 69 nights. And so that's, we're preparing now. Matter of fact, we had staff there today setting up. We are also using this facility as a training center. We are beginning a new program, which is called Day Habilitation, but it's a training program for everything from teaching our clients how to be good tenants, when to run the vacuum, when not to, to how to shut the emergency, power off, to how to find a job, any number of things. And so we're working at developing that curriculum now, and we'll be launching that. And so on the days that we're not using this as a sleeping quarters, we will be providing training opportunities at this site. So, and we've already been using it for a number of activities since we came across. So with that, again, I'd like to say thank you. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I think there was some supplemental information that was shared with you about our warming center. But if you have any other questions, let me know. Otherwise, thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, Jana, for all that information. Really helpful to get that update. You have the warming center orientation. Did that happen? I saw that the date changed. And if anybody wanted to volunteer for the warming center this winter, when would they attend the orientation?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Barnich. We are doing the warming center, I think, orientation this next week. That said, we will be doing orientations throughout the season. So if you can't make it, that's not a problem. We are, however, we do ask that our volunteers are life scanned, because families are allowed to come to the, to the, to the warming center. So we will be life scanning all of our volunteers. But if anyone has any interest in volunteering, either to provide meals, or to provide donations, or to serve in terms of helping at, at the warming center, we would greatly appreciate it. It is one of the, one of the areas where we have the greatest need for volunteers on a, on a regular basis.
Hi, Jana. Thank you so much for that. Just a quick question on the resources by quarter. I think it's a few slides back. I'm just curious why the water jumped up so high in fourth quarter. Was that an anomaly, or?
Quite honestly, I think this is a situation where this was, so the fourth quarter would be the last quarter of the year. That would be March to June, March through June. And so one is it's warmer. The other is we have been doing a significant amount of work. So this, let me pause. This assistance by quarter is not necessarily for the city of Oro Grande. This is our total services. And amongst the things we have done is we have expanded services, particularly trying to address some of the challenges in the Santa Maria Riverbed, and in particular, in that area, people do not have access to water. And so I suspect that that's part of it. But it also may well be that it was just a warmer time of year.
Thank you. And I just wanted to let you know how many people in the community reach out to you. And obviously, you know, because you work there. But on all the social media platforms, when anyone says, "I'm struggling with staying where I am," or "I'm going to be homeless soon," your organization comes up every single time in the comments. So I just want you to know that you're doing great work, and the community knows that you're a resource. And anyone in the community that wants to help volunteer, I, I've worked the warming center many times, and it's, it's a great place, and the people that you have working there are exceptional. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do appreciate the note. You know, sometimes people are struggling, and they think, "Well, I'm not homeless." So they have homeless in their name, so that must not be for me. And that is, in fact, not the case. We, you know, as I said with regard to the homeless prevention, if we can prevent someone from falling into homelessness, that's the most cost-effective thing we can do, and the least disruptive to the families. So we're, we're very much keyed to, to provide those services. And we don't always have the service, but we really do try to help people navigate that process and find the best solution that we can for them. Thank you.
Just echo everyone else's comments, Jana, about just what a tremendous service your organization does for the community. And a quick question, you said you need a life scan for a volunteer. Is that something where we need to just go get that done, or do we go through you? Just tell them we're doing it for you?
Both ways could, could help. But we are happy to help provide that. There, oftentimes there's a financial cost. And if that's a problem for the volunteer, we can certainly try to accommodate that as well.
Okay.
But we, yeah, there are a variety of sources for that, and we can guide folks accordingly.
Thank you.
If they want to give us. The best way to contact us is info@5chc.org. In fact, we kind of spread that around. However, as the inquiry comes in, we, we kind of know how to route it. So that's the, that's the simple email to contact us.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jana. Appreciate your, your presentation and all the work you do.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move on to city manager communications.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem. Members of the council, Matt Downing, your city manager. A couple of updates for you this evening. The Five Cities Fire Authority hosted an open house on October 12th. It was a great turnout from the community, and they were very grateful for the support from the community as well. So that included the Five Cities Men's Club, Oro Grande Police Department, and Honor Guard, Smart and Final, Vaughn's Party Factory, the Friends of the Five Cities Fire Authority, and the San Luis Obispo County Fire Chiefs Association. They provided the fire prevention simulator, simulation trailer that I heard was very, very good. Just so everybody knows, that's a regional asset that was grant-funded through FEMA and the Fire Safe Council, so that is available to others. Halloween is right around the corner, if you didn't already know that. This weekend at Elm Street Park, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m., both on Saturday and Sunday, we will have our Halloween event. There will be a costume contest, food trucks, trick-or-treating, a bounce town, a carnival, and more. So again, that's Saturday and Sunday, 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. on both days. Additionally, with regard to the general plan, we do have a general plan mapping survey that is available on the project's website. That allows the public to provide input on land use scenarios for the city moving forward. So you can learn more and participate at planoroegrande.com. Again, that's planoroegrande.com, not .org.com. I always put in .org because I'm used to saying oroegrande.org. But it is .com. And then lastly, on a more somber note, I did want to acknowledge that last Monday on October 14th, we had a pretty significant event in our city over on Spruce Street. I won't go into detail on the event itself, but I do want to take the opportunity to highlight our emergency responders in our police department, our Five Cities Fire Authority, as well as our neighboring agencies, who all lent a hand and came in to help us with that event as well. So we're very grateful for their partnership, very grateful for our internal teamwork in our own city, but also our teamwork regionally. So I do want to thank everybody for that and acknowledge that at this moment in time. And that concludes my comments for this evening.
All right. Thank you for that. And with that, I'm actually going to go back to 5B and move that all ordinance be read in title only.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Should never turn it off. So Mayor Ray Russom is not here, so I will begin and start with County Water Resources Advisory Committee. We did have a nice presentation there on the, the county is updating their drought preparedness studies, something we've done many times. And it, it, there was nothing significantly different there, I'll just say, and certainly, certainly the same kind of thing that we do here as well. At, what do I do with my notes from SlowCog? Yeah, I'll just do it from memory. So at SlowCog, we did, we are beginning the work on what's called the Regional Transportation Plan, which we do, it seems like we're always starting it or voting on it. It goes on forever. But they are just putting together the participation, the public participation part of that. And if people are interested in that, it is regionaltransportationparticipation.org. And if that doesn't get you there, go through SlowCog. Sorry. There were a number of transfers of funds that we've seen a whole bunch of lately. I think I've reported on most of them, but some of them were kind of finalized here, where projects that are not going to, are not ready to go forward, and the funds are transferred mostly to projects that are, are having cost overruns. There were a number of them, but the most significant one for us is that the Shell Beach multimodal path all the way from, all the way through Shell Beach, and planned then to go all the way to the end of, to Avala Drive, has been funded and, has been funded for, for planning. And the part going to Spyglass has been funded for completion since it's already planned. It's essential that that happens, because otherwise, the Coastal Commission would not sign off on the widening, the extra lane we have planned for 101. So that was SlowCog. Reach did not meet, and Waste, WMA, Waste Management, whatever they're called. Sorry. So used to the acronyms. Now I don't can't remember the name, but did not meet this, this period at all. So we'll move on to Councilmember Barnich.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Guthrie, I gave all my reports. Last time we reported out on this, on our committees, and I have no additional reports.
As I understand, if you don't turn it off, it stays on you the whole time. We'll move on to Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just have one update for Five Cities Fire Authority. So a while back, when we consulted with Baker Tilly, they had recommended that we get a community risk assessment, so that we had a better understanding of what our fire was providing and what was lacking, or what we would need. So at the last meeting, which was yesterday, we actually approved, awarded a contract for community risk assessment, standards of coverage, and strategic planning document to an organization called AP Triton. So we're hoping to get the information from all of those three parts within four to six months. And that, that'll be very helpful for Five Cities Fire Authority moving forward. There was a PSA that our management had mentioned last night in regards to when a situation, fire sirens, whatever that is, is near you out in front of your house or your place of business, for your safety, because you don't know what is going on and who might be running around, it's better for you to stay inside as opposed to going outside and, and taking a look and seeing what's going on, just for your safety. So that was a PSA I wanted to share. Chief Hallett updated us and let us know that Lafco approved the Oceano divestiture. So that's very good. We've been waiting for that for quite a long time, and now we can move forward with our county contract for service to Oceano. We have five new recruits, and the Five Cities Fire Authority will be starting an internal academy soon. Let's see. Oh, yeah, and city manager Matt already talked about the open house. So that is all we had for Five Cities Fire Authority, and this at SlowCog did not meet.
With that, we'll move on to Councilmember Seacrest.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The Air Pollution Control District Board has not met since we've, we've last been here. I did attend, which I do generally every month, the South County Chambers of Commerce Government Affairs Committee meeting, and city manager Downing attended as well. And before that, they do the Rise and Shine, I guess you would say, social. So we did that. There's not going to be one in November. So the next one to look forward to would be December 12th, December 4th, sorry, Rise and Shine. I'm also on the Citizens Advisory Group for the Oro Grande's General Plan Update, which, which is, I think, going to be a big, long project. So excited to be participating in that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. With that, we are going to move on to, I think this is public comment. And with that, we'll move to community comments. It suggests that this is for items that are not on the agenda. And I'll remind you, these, this, there is a one-minute time limit on this. So anyone who would like to speak on items not on the agenda, now's your time.
Hello, again, Michael Punsland. As you continue to perpetuate the arbitrary and unreasonable police-state mentality and dictates of our current state administration, you may want to consider a recent federal appeals court victory regarding free speech at public meetings. Many are now awake and are peacefully standing against unjust laws and local policies, mandates, and ordinances. We are not going to allow local, state, or federal governments and bureaucrats to infringe or abolish our First Amendment rights or any of our constitutional rights. The Institute for Free Speech and the parents they represented won a huge victory this month in a federal appeals court. The court's ruling protects our First Amendment right to speak freely at public meetings. This case was against school board censorship, and though Oro Grande may be incorporated, we, the people, have not given you the right or power to infringe on our constitutionally protected free speech during public comment or at any time. The city council doing so may cause a liability issue for our city. If a case is brought and won, the sitting council nor our city attorney will pay the price.
If you could wrap up, please.
Just one second. A federal appeals court just sent an unmistakable and resounding message, striking down unconstitutional policies that silenced and/or restricted citizens at Brevard County School Board Meetings.
This is your first warning? Thank you.
I'll, I'll continue reading. The case stemmed from Brevard School Board's repeated interruption, silencing, and even removal of parents from meetings when they attempted to voice their concerns about school policies, school curricula, or leadership when addressing the board during the public comment period. In the decision, the court found that multiple policies restricting speech at these meetings violated the First Amendment rights of parents and community members. The case challenged prohibitions on abuses and personally-directed speech, as well as the school's unusually restrictive application of its bound on obscene speech. It is time for council to return public comment to three minutes at its well-established precedent. Here are relevant quotes from the related case. The brave members in this case made this 11th Circuit victory possible. They ensured that parents have the right to hold their school boards and governments accountable. This win underscores that when we refuse to be silenced, we not only reclaim our voices, but also reinforce the bedrock American right of free speech. We must all stand firm against
This is your first warning?
Any encroachment on our fundamental rights, especially on matters concerning our children's education. And that was by Moms for Liberty co-founder.
My name is Gaia Powell, and I oppose your 62nd restriction and infringement on my First Amendment right. And I will be reading a statement. It will be less than three minutes, but I will exercise my rights. I am requesting the total amount of how much the city paid the city attorney's firm during the two years approximately, under Oro Grande landowner's water well drilling application was being processed. And while his hearings were unreasonably and repeatedly continued over and over and over at his great inconvenience and expense, until it was finally approved by the city council, but only with arbitrarily dictated I am also requesting the total on how much has been paid to the city attorney's firm to date, following the city's receipt of that landowner's attorney's first letter informing the city of an intended legal action. Apparently, your infringement on the landlord's constitutional rights and the violations
Time's up, if you could wrap it up, please.
Of the violation of your own policies has placed the city in a position of highly probable litigation, if not settled.
Again, this is your first warning, if you could wrap it up, please.
Secondly, I will, I still have not received the answers to these questions.
And this is your second warning.
The mayor previously recused herself, the mayor previously recused herself from voting on TBID agenda items due to a potential conflict of interest.
And with that, I am going to put us in recess for a five-minute period. Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'll call us back to order. And anyone else who would like to address the council on items not on the agenda?
My name is Gary Smith. Sent you yesterday regarding how the South County sanitary rates have affected senior citizen mobile home parks like ours. Three years ago, you passed a rate increase of 27% and adopted amendments to the franchise agreement. In this process, a definition change slipped in, hopefully not intentionally, that resulted in our rate increase being 54%. This increase above the 27% has cost us around $45,000 in a community where many residents are on fixed Social Security incomes. Now that a new base rate increase is being submitted by SCSS, we are asking that you look into these matters and give us answers to questions we send to the staff regarding the options we have to reduce these enormous costs in our retirement community.
Start. Mayor Protem, council members and staff. I live in Pismo Beach. I'm the president of the Pismo Beach Mobile Home Park. We have 233 residents. We were notified by telephone from South County Sanitation that they are changing our billing and they are charging us a commercial rate for each resident without any prior notification or public hearing. What they have done is completely changed everything, and they have created their own zoning, and they have told us that we are multifamily housing when we are not, we are zoned residential. What they have done is they have gone to, who this affects is the seniors that live in mobile home parks. This not only affects Oro Grande, Oceano, Grover Beach, Pismo, all up and down the county. We think it is unfair. We haven't had any notice and that we just want, we just like to bring it to your attention that there's going to be a lot of complaints from seniors. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
I think that this quote is something that you all desperately need to hear considering what I just witnessed in the suppression of your community's voices. Once a government is committed to silencing the voice of opposition, it has only one way to go, and that is down the path of increasingly repressive measures until it becomes a source of terror to all its citizens and creates a country where everyone lives in fear. This quote is from Harry Truman, and it's highlighting the dangerous trajectory of government when they take to suppress dissenting voices, which ultimately leads to oppression. And I'm not taking any sides on the election or whatnot at this meeting. I just think that suppressing these voices and giving each person only one minute, it, it's a little bit of a dictatorship. And Mr. Guthrie, you seem to kind of enjoy exerting that authority and power, and that's concerning for me. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else who would like to address the council on this? All right. With that, I'll go to the city attorney. Did you want to, we did have the one question in there.
Well, Mayor Protem, we do want to see if there's any Zoom speakers on the platform.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. We do have one raised hand so far. Dawn Smith. Okay, Dawn, you're able to speak now. You want to unmute yourself? Dawn, I see you're unmuted. You can speak now. Okay, unfortunately, we're not hearing anything, and I do not have any other raised hands. Would you like to keep open? What would you like to do?
Does he look like he can hear you and unable to?
Let me try something. I'm going to lower his hand and see if he can raise it back. Okay, we're testing, Dawn. If you can hear us and you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. He rose his hand. Let's try again. Okay, I do see you're unmuted. Go ahead and try to speak. Okay, we don't hear anything. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
So Mayor Protem, I think if our speaker's listening, he can submit correspondence as well if there are technical difficulties with speaking during this portion of the meeting.
Okay, yeah, I do know Mr. Smith, and I'll practice with him for next time. With that, I will go. There was a specific question asked about the contract. I don't know if you were able to pick it out from the one-minute part of that. Did you want to respond to how we, how we work out the city attorney contract?
I don't believe so. I mean, I think to the extent I heard comments about attorney's fees, certainly, you know, Public Records Act request is the appropriate venue for that information. It's not information I have offhand or know off the top of my mind.
Okay. So just suggest to the public, if you have a specific question, that go ahead and submit it as an email, and we'll be able to respond to that. All right. Thank you. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Any questions about any item on the consent agenda tonight?
No, thank you.
No, I have no questions. I just have a comment on 9G, but I don't need to pull it for separate consideration.
Any other comments on any items? Why don't you go ahead then and comment on 9G?
Do you want to, when we bring it back, if you open it up to the public, and I'll comment at the end? Because it's not a question, it's just a comment.
Okay. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to the public for comments on items that are on the consent agenda. Anyone in the audience? All right, with that, we'll check online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right. With that, we'll bring it back for comment, and if you could, Councilmember Barnage.
I just wanted to, I'm just excited about the Haslow project and also happy that the city of Rojo Grande can increase the funding through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, 63-unit affordable housing project at 700 Oak Park Boulevard. We do collect these fees, these in-lu fees for affordable housing, and so it's really exciting to see this used for something that's going to house so many families. And I'm just, I just can't wait to see this project built and really thankful that, that Haslow is working in our city to make this happen. Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor Protem, I would move approval of items 9A through 9G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We got a roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnage?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes. So we'll move on. We have no public carions. We do have one business item, and that is 11A, that will be active transfer, the report on the Active Transportation Plan Progress Report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Brian Pedrotti with Community Development, I'm the Community Development Director. Tonight, we have an update on the status of an exciting project that the city has been working on for the past year, Rojo Grande's first ever Active Transportation Plan, or ATP. And the city has hired KTU, KTU and A consultants to prepare our ATP, and Jacob Leon is on the line, and he'll be providing overview of the effort so far. We also have Michelle Matson, I believe, the Transportation Sub Consultant for any questions as well. Just really quick background, the state of California established its Active Transportation Program in 2013 to encourage the increased use of active modes of transportation. This program provides the largest source of grant funding for bikes and walking projects, and those cities with an ATP increase their chance of securing these grants, which can be substantial. Our ATP costs around $250,000 with approximately $221,000 of that from a state transportation planning grant and the remaining $28,000 local sales tax. And so with that, I will turn it over to Jacob for a presentation, and I'll man the slideshow from here.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, thank you so much for having me tonight. Hopefully y'all can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Great. Well, thank you again for giving us the opportunity to present this, this update to you all. It's really important in the planning process to make sure that everyone's aware of, you know, the planning efforts that have been done to date so that when we come back to you all for adoption sometime early next year, that it isn't the first time you're hearing of this presentation or of this project. So again, thank you so much on behalf of the entire planning team for having us tonight. So, oh, and Brian, just let you know, every time I talk, by default, my name comes up instead of me seeing the slide. I don't know if whoever's manning the Zoom link, if there's a way to, for me to continue seeing the slide deck as I'm speaking. So sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. We'll, we'll work on getting that.
Okay, perfect. Okay, yes, so for today, we are going to give you all a project update, and as Brian is forwarding for, towards, we're going to begin with a project overview. So beginning with, I just want to let you all know about the project. Right, it's a group effort between city staff, ourselves at KTU, and of course, Michelle Matson from Central Coast Transportation Consultant. Our group is here working on this Active Transportation Plan, and we bring years and years of experience on these kinds of planning efforts. On the next slide, you'll see, you know, what are the goals of this Active Transportation Plan? So these projects are about developing improvements for walking, bicycling, rolling, for trans, for transit, and as well, of course, people who drive by cars. The major steps of this plan include finding any gaps in the transportation network, assessing all of many, many forms of data to make sure that we're being comprehensive on what's on the ground today in order to address those gaps and provide the appropriate recommendations. Of course, we conduct in community engagement to make sure that we're hearing people's voices when it comes to these, when it comes to walking, biking, and everything in between for active transportation. And all this leads up to, you know, developing and prioritizing recommendations that reflect the unique needs of Oro Grande. The next few slides, you'll see that we've got already some really great examples of active transportation. So the slide here seeing, you know, you, there's crosswalks with high visibility, high-visibility crosswalks and curb ramps. We're looking at enhanced crossings with those flashing beacons that really allow people to become more visible as they're trying to cross the street. And of course, you know, transit stops and the amenities that are provided. On the next slide, we have, of course, bicycle facilities are already present throughout the city. So your bike lanes, your bicycle routes, and your enhanced bicycle facilities with the green striping. This is really great. It was refreshing to see all of these on the ground right now, you know, at the start of the project. Next slide, you'll see that there's, of course, all the other supportive amenities, right, that kind of create the, just a comfortable experience for everybody on the streets of things like those transit shelters and the trash bins, pedestrian scale lighting, as well as having a tree canopy. The all, all of this comes together really not to create a comfortable environment for everybody here in your community. On the next slide, I just want to quickly mention that, of course, this Active Transportation Plan focuses on the entire city. And so things like your activity centers where people are going to, right, those destinations are really important to connect people to and from the residential areas is one of the major focus, one of the major elements of this, of the planning process. And you'll see eventually, when you see the report itself, there's going to be many, many other forms of data analysis that we conducted. On the next slide, you'll see that our collision data, that's a major component of this analysis, understanding over a 10-year timeframe where collisions have been taking place so that we can hopefully address some of those, those potential issues that are happening that led to some of those collisions. Next slide, you'll see that we also have to understand what has been previously planned, like what's on the ground today so that we can better plan for the future. So understanding what was planned previously in the circulation element update was really important for us at the beginning of the project. Last map, last sample map that you'll see on the next slide is a really important one. This is the one we call the Level of Traffic Stress. It's an opportunity for us to try to understand the characteristics of the streets in Oro Grande and the potential stress that that, you know, creates for users on the streets based on different characteristics. More information can be found on the report once the, once it gets into your hands in the next couple of months. I do want to spend a minute or two talking about the amazing community engagement that our team and has conducted, and great thanks to also the city staff that's been helping us on this project. So Brian, if we can move forward to the community engagement overview slide, I'll give a quick overview. We had an online survey, right? We had over 100 surveys completed that gave us a really great understanding of people's feelings and thoughts about active transportation. We had an online comment map, so those people who are comfortable with online technology were able to drop pins and add comments. Our team, myself and my team members, we were out there three times. We did three pop-up events. Our team, myself and my team members, we were out there three times. We did three pop-up events. That's us going to the people at these, you know, established events in your city to connect with them. And of course, we had two really great workshops, one in December of last year and one that we just completed last month in September. These were those traditional workshops where we invited people in the very room that you're all in right now, council chambers, to give them all project updates. And a big shout out and a big thank you to everybody who participated with that. That was, it was really rewarding to speak with all of the community members and stakeholders. Lastly, speaking of stakeholders, we have a working group as part of this planning process. We have members from the county, from Slocock, from Caltrans, et cetera, who've been providing thoughts and ideas as well throughout the planning process. So again, the next slide, you'll see some pictures, and just again, once again, a quick shout out and thank you to everybody who's participated. Quick key takeaways before I jump into the recommendations, which is the meat of this presentation. On this, you'll see that residents, visitors, and stakeholders, right? They all saw the value of safe and efficient active transportation facilities. We also heard over and over the desire for complete sidewalks, right? A connected system of bicycle facilities, safe walking bicycle routes to the schools, parks, the village, the library, and these other destinations. And some of the streets that we heard over and over, I'm sure there's no surprise for you all, is Grand Avenue, Branch, Alcyon, Fair Oaks, and Oak Park. Those are the streets that were mentioned, as I mentioned, pretty much at every event that we had. So we combined all of this information from existing conditions analysis with the community engagement to really develop the draft recommendations for this, for this active transportation plan. So on the next slide, let's get into it. So Brian, since I still can't see the slide deck, I'm assuming we are on the slide that says Types of Bike Ways. I wanted to purposely have the slide to, for you to understand the line work that you're going to see on the next. For example, we have Class 1 multi-use pathways. These are these great facilities that are off from the street. You know, think of those beautiful bike paths, right, that are recreational but also serve, you know, transportation purposes. We have many in the county throughout San Luis Obispo County. Those are delineated by the red line that you'll see on the map. The blue lines are your bike lanes. These are your classic strip bike lanes that are on the ground that provide a space for the cyclist. The green lines are your bike routes. Oh, thank you so much. Now we can see the slide deck. I appreciate it. The green lines are the bike routes, right? Those are the, those are usually found on residential streets that allow a slower, more comfortable ride experience for cyclists. And lastly, that mustard-yellow line that you'll see momentarily are the separated bike ways. These are dedicated facilities for cyclists, but they have vertical separations such as a curb, striping, plastic bullets, et cetera. So you'll have a combination. On the next slide, you'll see that we have, what you're showing, what you're seeing now are all the existing bike facilities. You have a combination of the three, the multi-use path, the bike lanes, and the bike routes. And so it gives you a glimpse. You have about 15, 16 miles of bike facilities on the ground to date. On the next slide, you'll see that the proposed network is really expanding, tripling almost, right? The amount of potential bicycle facilities that we, that you'd be providing your community. So we go to having approximately seven and a half miles of those multi-use paths, almost 20 miles of bike lanes, 12, 11 and a half miles of bike routes, and 10 and a half miles of separated bike ways. This map that you're seeing here is, was one of the most important maps in the draft recommendations. It's really communicating all the work that has, you know, taken place over the past year. It includes the circulation element update, the community engagement, our analysis that we've done, field work that we've completed. It really is a culmination of all those efforts and vetting things back and forth with city staff as well, making sure that we are being comprehensive, but also respecting the unique elements and aspects of the Aurora Grande community and the literal landscape and the topography and the opportunities that are present throughout the city. On the next slide, I want to point out the importance of prioritization. This is really important with these active transportation elements. Grant sources love to see, and they want to see, that the city wanted the effort to do some kind of prioritization. So next, you'll see that there is a large set of criteria that our team worked with their city and the working group as well to figure out how we're going to prioritize and determine what makes a project, you know, important from a comprehensive point of view. So just in examples, right, schools, parks, right, are, could be important. Population density, disadvantaged communities, census data, like seeing walk to work, bike to work, senior density, child density, that sort of thing. All of these numbers were crunched, and we have a fancy spreadsheet JIya software that kind of runs all of our projects, and it spits out, you know, this list of projects, such as on the next slide, right? We have over 20 projects, but we just quickly want to just show the top 10 projects. These are the high-priority projects, and showing the results of that. So Grand Avenue, Elm, Fair Oaks, Branch, Oak Park, Alder, Farrell, West Branch, Soto, Ash, and Alcyon. These were the top projects that were, that came out of that prioritization process. So again, really important. It helps you all make decisions in the future when funding opportunities present themselves. So next, I do want to mention that it's not just about bicycling. We have, an active transportation plan also needs to ensure that there's the pedestrian element as well. So we have made recommendations such as these examples you see on your screen to ensure that the pedestrian network is also complete to the greatest extent possible. So these are, these examples are included in the draft recommendations. On the next slide, you'll see that we have identified over 50 pedestrian recommendations through our planning process. And the report itself is going to have a long table with descriptions of all of these numbered pedestrian projects that are highlighted in yellow here. So more detail will be included in the report, but we just wanted to communicate that to you, that we were trying to be as thorough as possible with that. Next, we were also really happy to see that the scope of work included a Safe Rested School Element. This is really important with these planning projects, that you don't always see a Safe Rested School Element included. So we were more than thrilled to analyze the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school as part of this process. What you're seeing is just an example of the type of recommendations that are included in the, that will be included in the draft report. Here's an example of Ocean View Elementary identifying missing infrastructure and recommendations for your city to consider. So again, this is just an example of the five schools that were included. We're almost done, and we wanted to also mention that our scope of work also included putting together planning-level design. So think of those 10%, 20% engineering drawings for three corridors, three part, from that priority list that you saw earlier, based on internal conversations with the staff and working group. These three that you see on your screen, Grant, Elm, and Fair Oaks, were the three projects that our team has been working on, putting together these recommendations. There's a number of reasons, right? There's connections, there's missing infrastructure, and we can get more into that during the Q and A, but we just wanted to let you know that these three projects are being looked at a little closer, and it'll set you all up for success in the future as you all pursue future funding opportunities, as Brian mentioned at the very beginning. On the next slide, it's just a quick visual of those three projects and where they're located. You'll see that they do go quite a distance within your city right here. So just wanted to highlight that for you all, councilmembers. Lastly, on the next slide, you'll see that in the main report itself, these three projects are going to receive these cut sheets. We're going to have a description. We'll have infographics. There'll be the key facts and recommendations, and then aerials with callouts and a legend with showing the types of recommendations that are being included for these three corridors. We've done this in dozens of past active transportation plans, and it's, have worked out really well for our clients in the past. Again, set you all up for success in the near future. I want to end the presentation with next step. So Q and A, open conversation with you all tonight. I look forward to answering any questions you may have. We're going to be finalizing the draft Active Transportation Plan. We have one more stakeholder working group meeting that is scheduled in November. We're going to present the draft plan to commission. We'll hopefully get the recommendation to then present to you all in January for adoption. And then Brian and Drew, ourselves, we're all going to wrap everything up and close out the project by the end of February, because that is when the grant itself expires. We are on track with all of these, you know, upcoming milestones, so I'm just happy to report that as well. Brian, thank you so much. That does conclude the brief presentation we wanted to give you all. I know I just threw a lot at you, but I, again, thank you very much on behalf of the K2A team, CCTC, and everyone else at the cities who's been helping us throughout this process. I look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Start on my left, any questions for?
Just a question, or just, I mean, it's a question, I think, more for the public. I think just confirming that this is a plan that we have so that when we get grant funding, or if there's a possibility of additional revenue of some sort, we already have plans in place to be able to put projects together. These aren't necessarily, unfortunately, sadly, we're not going to do any of this anytime soon. Is that correct? Oh, sorry. I don't know who, I mean, Brian, or?
Go ahead, Jacob, if you want to.
Yeah, I can take the first part of that, that question. Yes, the Active Transportation Plan is oftentimes one of the minimum requirements for some of these state or federal resources, right, for you all to plan in the future. So having this adopted in January is, is one of the, is an incredible critical step. So it is an exciting time for you all to finally have an updated, an active transportation plan to set you up for those kind of successes. Yes, any future project that you would like to pursue in the future, well, you'll need to go into deeper design detail, right? Hiring a civil traffic engineer, transportation engineer to take these designs or these projects to the next level. But this is like that middle baton pass, you know, bridging you all to get to that next step. So I hope that answers at least part of the question. Brian, I think you wanted to jump in on that?
Yes, and I would agree with that also. You know, they'll come at different times. You know, for instance, Alcyon Complete Streets is in the plan as well, and that has funding. So we try to incorporate things that, you know, were already in the, in the planning stages, but then also looking out into the future.
And then just one other quick question. How long does the Active Transportation Plan usually, what's the lifespan of a plan for like this?
Yes, I'm happy to answer that, councilmember. Cities often update active transportation plans every five to eight years. So you don't have to be doing this like every other year, like maybe some other planning processes, but trends and things change, infrastructure changes. But right now, in the state of the industry, with bicycle pedestrian infrastructure and programming, we're in a good spot. We've been seeing steady infrastructure, you know, being put in place over the past, in the past year. So you are all in a good spot, you know, 2025 adopting this plan. It will serve you all really well for the next five to eight years.
Sorry, and then just one other question. So this, this does set us up for, if there were grants out there, the feds or the state's going to look favorably towards a city that has one of these current newly-adopted active transportation plans, I would imagine, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, especially also, councilmember, because a lot of these grants or these funding sources also want to make sure that a city and agency, a town, has had public engagement. And so having this, this plan adopted in 2025, you have records that you did outreach in the past year or two, recent outreach to justify and help you and support you all in those efforts. So that is a critical element of having a recently-adopted ATP plan.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is for Director Pedrati. How does an active transportation plan fit within our circulation element? And will this be, since it's going to be adopted so soon, will this be something that we can take into account when we are redoing our general plan?
Yes, both. We, the circulation element was provided to KTU and A, has been incorporated, as well as the bicycle, bicycle and pedestrian master plan that was from 2012. So our existing documents were worked in, and luckily, we also have the general plan update going at the same time. So this will be incorporated in that general plan update. We just finished our circulation element in 2021, but as you all know, they have to be consistent with each other, all the elements. So we'll make sure there's consistency, back-consistency with our circulation element. So if there's any changes that need to be made, tweaks, hopefully, then we do that after the general plan update.
So my question is, does the Active Transportation Plan affect the circulation plan? And if so, when it's being voted on, does the circulation plan need to be taken into account? So that, like, which comes first, like the chicken or the egg, right? So I don't, my concern is adopting an active transportation plan, then having to go back to the circulation plan and changing it so that it matches the Active Transportation Plan, where, I don't know if I'm explaining myself correctly, but is one more important than the other? And how do we make the decision on one without looking closely at the other?
I don't necessarily think one is more important than the other. They, we just need to make sure that we account for each as we're going forward. You know, each gives more information and sort of builds on each other. The Active Transportation Plan had lots of public input. At the same time, we are getting general plan update input, so we've actually incorporated some of that general plan update input into this plan as well. So in that case, we, we're not planning, again, on really changing the circulation element since that was done so recently. But this, all this kind of builds on each other, so that when we have the general plan update, all of this is incorporated together.
Thank you. Those are my only questions.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. When, are we going to have a similar prioritization of the sidewalk gaps? Which ones are going to be the most effective, or were the most requested?
I'll jump in on this answer, Brian, if that's okay?
Sure.
Councilmember, great question. We are, the prioritization process only was only for the bike corridors, but the narrative in the, in the plan does include descriptions about how to prioritize other elements for the pedestrian elements. We often include prioritizing school, any sidewalk or pedestrian gap closures around schools and parks and destinations, commercial areas, based on, first, our experience with working with dozens of communities across California, as well as, that's the very similar criteria, you know, that we would apply for them if we were to go through the process of doing pedestrian prioritization. So we are more than happy, and we will include that kind of narrative to help you out with that. But to be completely clear, the prioritization was only done for the bike corridors.
And my second question, do we have any possibility for having some sort of a performance, I'll call it, performance review? So how, you know, do we go back and see when we put these facilities in place, whether we see higher bicycle activity, whether we see safer bicycle activity? I mean, I'm thinking of the City of San Luis Obispo, and they have significant bike infrastructure and the constant comment that, you know, you never see anybody in our bike lanes. So I wondered, do we have, do we have any, any similar plans for a, some sort of look back to measure how effective our active transportation plan is?
I'll take the first part, and Brian, you can jump in. We will have recommendations for that very reason, right? Having data, concrete data, does help you with the hopes that it will help you in the future to continue improving and adding more infrastructure. So there are some programmatic recommendations in the recommendations chapter that addresses just that, but it will be up to the city to implement any of those programs, such as bike counters, surveys. All of this will come in the future as infrastructure is being built, but that'll be, once again, a decision that your city will need to make in order to have that kind of data to support you all over the next decade plus.
And I don't have any more questions. I do have some, some comments. But I will, with that, open it to the public. So anyone who would like to speak on this item, I'll remind you, when this is a three-minute, you have three minutes here to speak on, on these types of projects, of business that is in front of the council. So anyone who'd like to speak on the active transportation, you're certainly welcome at this time.
So I bike with my family a lot, and I think it's one of the most enriching activities that, you know, a city can have. And for Aurora Grande, there is a lot of safety concerns that do keep us from biking more often. And a lot of times, it is speeders on Grand Avenue who do not give us enough space. And their speed also can give us pushback and actually, like, push our bikes over and make it really unsafe. And then also sometimes on the bike lanes, because you mentioned, like, bikers not using them on the road from AG Hospital down towards Aurora Grande High School, that can get really dirty and rocks thrown from the fields and the equipment being run there. And so sometimes, we really can't use them because of how dirty and like, how many objects are in our way. So probably keeping our bike lanes clean could be a priority. And then also citing speeders might be. And then also citing speeders might be beneficial. And I also think that it is really important to highlight that those federal grants are, you know, looked favorably upon for cities that include public comment. And that's an issue that we're having in this city. So I think that realizing that public comment is so important for federal grants, maybe we can also incorporate that in, you know, all of our dealings with. So, thanks.
Hello. Mayor Protem, members of the council. My name is Eileen Lowe and I'm excited about this plan. This is, it's awesome to see this. I want to commend you. And I also want to give a plug to Caltrans because I know Caltrans is administering this grant. And we all pay our gas taxes and this is some of what we get back. So this is an exciting time. Let's see, I, I have a couple of questions and a, maybe one comment. My first question is about the routes. I don't know if you can scroll back to any of the maps, but I know that, I know that you have your key corridors of interest with Grand Avenue, Elm Street and those. And my question is, with regard to these corridor type projects, have you considered also the potential for some of the routes, quieter routes as an option? So, so being that Grand Avenue is a big thoroughfare for everyone, is it, is it a priority to put a class four bikeway there? Or could there be quiet streets that are better suited to direct bicyclists to, bicyclists and pedestrians for that matter, as a more pleasant experience? And we mentioned San Luis Obispo, Mayor Protem mentioned San Luis Obispo has done a lot of different infrastructure improvements. And one of the early projects they did was the bikeway on, is it Morrow Street maybe? Where they turned the stop signs. So they gave priority to bicyclists. So the cars have to stop, cyclists can go through. That was a very low cost option, but it was an alternative to busier streets that go north, south. I think that is probably fairly successful. So I, I'd be very interested in knowing if some quiet routes of that sort could be considered. Second is criteria for prioritization. I'm glad you mentioned the performance. I think it's critical in evaluating performance and prioritization that you look at some data as well as communities that are most affected. So if you're doing complaint based, you risk just listening to the people who are engaging in the effort as, as robust as the outreach effort is. I think it's still important to look at where the low income communities are. I'm glad that we're looking at, that you're looking at schools and connections to libraries and that. But I would just put another plug in for really vetting the criteria process. And lastly, uh-oh, class four bikeways. I would say the jury is still out on that. They're exciting. They look great. They're expensive. They are potentially high maintenance. And I, I think we'd have to be careful about how much weight we put into that as being an ultimate solution, being this is a plan. I know things can change. But I would hesitate to have that be a, a commitment for that type of facility. Thank you.
Anyone else on the active transportation plan here in the council chambers that will look online?
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right. And I appreciate it. With that, I'll bring it back to the council for comment in any direction. Why don't we start with Councilmember Seacrest?
Difficult to say. It's hard to be short. No, I mean, it, I'm glad to see it. I know it took a lot of work. We've got stakeholders input and I am still fairly new to the process, but I know that Halcyon Complete Streets is pretty amazing and that's going to start. And I know that was funded, I think, majority by some very large grants. So I think it's exciting. The public's comments are well taken. And I understand this is not a commitment to particular, very specific items, but it's exciting to see it and I'm looking forward to hopefully getting some of those grants. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm happy that we're going through this process and that we'll be adopting this in January. I think it's important that we have something like this. I don't really have specific comments on the, the planning in that I'm a touchy feely. I got to have it in front of me. I have to really have time to digest it, looking at it quickly in a presentation. I really can't give too much feedback on the specifics. However, from what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, I think this is a great start, great draft. I think that having the community engaged in the process is very helpful, the more, the better. When it comes back in January, I'll encourage council to really take a deep dive into it and try to envision what that would look like. Because I like plans, but I want plans to come to fruition. Having plans just to have plans really doesn't make sense to me. And at the end of the day, if we want an active transportation friendly city, we should engage in these plans. So I encourage that when these plans do get approved, that we actually look at them and see how we can incorporate them into our capital improvements.
Councilmember Bunch.
Thank you. I don't have any specific comments, but I really appreciate the update and look forward to seeing it come before the council next year. Thank you.
All right. So I, I do have some additional comments. I think, I, as some, you know, I probably actively bicycle quite a bit. And, and so when I will echo the quiet streets, Grand Avenue, I'll say is like the dream when we ultimately get control that where all of this activity, which is probably the most accessible for biking and walking. But I think we all recognize how difficult and how expensive and how, in my mind, how far off in the future that is. So finding, what I found for me is finding alternative routes where you can sort of find a back way into Grand Avenue and spend as little time as Grand Avenue as possible, whether that's, you know, going up Alder Street and then cutting through the bank and through the, through the cemetery to, to get somewhere or, or using Cortland instead of, instead of Elm Street at this time because access from Elm to Grand is not fun at all. So I, I, I did want to also make the case for, for an area, for the Pike as also a, an area where we should be looking at an increased level of review. I recognize that it is only a little bit of the Pike is in the city, but it does connect really strongly to a couple of really important areas. One, it connects with the house, what will be the new Halcyon project. I think a lot of people forget that a lot of our students actually go to Fair Grove, even though it's in Grover Beach. All the kids on my street go, all, all the kids in that, it's not a quarter of the city, but that corner of the city actually go to Fair Grove. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm much closer to Hard Grove, but all of the students on my street, all three or four of them go to Fair Grove. So I think the case for the Pike is pretty strong. It also connects beyond Fair Grove as to what in my mind is probably the number one active transportation potential in the city. And that is the high school that the students coming out of Oceano or out of Grover Beach down on that end, having a really safe route all the way through the primary area there to Halcyon to Fair, to, excuse me, to Fair Oaks to the high school and possibly even into the village is something that's far more likely to happen in the next ten years than I think the full conversion of Grand Avenue into something where everyone would feel safe biking on it. I also echo, I go down Fair Grove all the time and the dirt clods are, you know, you, you definitely have to avoid them. So I'll, I'll echo that as well. And those, yeah, those, those are my comments. I do think, yeah, okay. I, I do think that, yeah, this is something we need to get, we have to have in place. I will point out that our old, our one was old, but it was good enough to get us Halcyon. So, you know, hopefully this will, this will help us even more. And I'll hand it over to.
I just have one follow-up talking about Grand Avenue. My husband bikes to Pismo Preserve often and then he bikes Pismo Preserve and he will not go down Grand Avenue. So he goes next to the high school. He doesn't go over to the Pike as far, you know, because that would be cutting over. But he does take the tree streets through there. Very, he feels very safe. So I do echo that how much do we push people towards Grand Avenue when maybe that's not the best route as far as safety and comfort of bikers? That's all. Thank you.
At our last step, do you guys have the direction you think you need?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
All right. Then I think this is just receive and file. All right. This brings us to council member communications. So any communication starting with?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Well, I'll just add here, I guess I could have done this on reports. I did go to the League of Cities meeting here that last week. Actually, very, very, very good League of Cities. I've been to a few and many of them are not particularly useful, but this one in particular, a lot, a lot of good stuff that, that, that I felt came out of that. So something I can recommend to the council members in the future. And anything from staff here? All right. Well, with that, we are adjourned.